So we don't have a budget for capital here today. So I will begin the work session Monday, July 2 at noon. Just a note announcement to the public that the meeting will be recorded. In front of me on the agenda is a public hearing. And I don't believe we have any call or need for that. Next item is old items, which there's nothing under. So I believe we can move on to the new items. And the first line item is to open bids for the library renovation project. So panel, ask me to do that.
First one we had is from Rave.
Alright, so this is from Rave Environmental Systems, Apea UPA. And under project for you, the mechanical portion of it, the bid is $495,000.
Is it just the mechanical? Or is this their furniture?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I see $490,000. We have Ulstrum Schaefer Electric Corporation in Georgetown, New York. And this is just for the 5A portion, electrical slash technology. And the big for that is $554,175. Everything else offerings are not applicable.
And Chitaco Mechanical.
Faulkner, New York. And our portion of this project is for a mechanical for $453,906. Nothing on any of the other projects in the offering section.
And this is Office Furniture Warehouse.
What this bid's for. Okay. So this is from Office Furniture Warehouse. Out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And their bid is for Section 2A furniture for $134,945. And that's all the bids, right?
Yes, it is.
So those will be reviewed at the commissary's meeting on Wednesday. Throw it on.
We may not make it on Wednesday, but Lori's still on vacation.
I was gonna ask, I didn't see anybody here from their apartment.
Yes, she's on vacation.
Thank you. Okay, get the name of the company for us reading, please. Or second, either.
The second one is Ulstrum Schaefer.
Ulstrum Schaefer, thank you, appreciate it.
A-H-L-S-T-R-O-M.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, so we'll see how those get processed and whether they'll be on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting. So next up, under new items, is Todd. Nice to meet you in person, PA Wiles. And we're still working with the technology maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not making TV respond at all.
You try safety locks or X-locks, dude.
I don't know if we did a presentation, but I mean, you can kind of look at the slides.
Yeah, or I could also just pull them up. There's a couple I think might be helpful to look at.
So as a background, we had a meeting with Todd. I don't remember how long ago it was, three, four weeks, where we were talking about some things unrelated to this. And she brought up this program that they're working on related to remote working in rural communities. And really sounded really interesting. So that's why we scheduled this meeting in order to have her come in and discuss it for the POC. I really think that what they're trying to do, PA Wiles, with it is really fascinating and very interesting. And definitely something that I would recommend. So that's part of the thought.
So a little background about us, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And we house, for the PAO Center for Entrepreneurship, we house all of the programs and services for businesses and communities related to the Pennsylvania Wilds effort. So the effort's been going on for 17 years now. All the counties in the region across rural PA, 13 counties across places sized Massachusetts essentially, are involved in the Pennsylvania Wilds. There's an intergovernmental agreement that binds all our counties together around this work. We work very closely with TCNR and DCD and the state, as well as the county governments are all part of it. And the effort, the main idea behind it is to grow outdoor recreation, the outdoor recreation industry in the Pennsylvania Wilds as a way to help create jobs, diversify local economies, inspire stewardship, and improve the quality of life. Outdoor rec is a huge growing industry in America. And it's only become sort of more important since COVID has happened. So the program we're going to talk about today, there's a lot of things that the center does and that the Wilds work does and we work with all our local partners on. But this particular one is a pilot program that we just received funding for. And it is to kind of do a remote work campaign. We started in two communities is what our pilot was. And then looking to, we need the First American Recovery Act funds coming down to our rural communities. So we wanted to make sure folks know about it. I know there's a bit longer of a window on those funds. We originally planned the program so that we thought it would be a good fit for local foundations. But as we learned more about these funds coming down, our counties have sort of indicated this is an area that they possibly want to invest in. And so it is not a hard sell at all. We're just trying to get the word out that this is a program as our counties are trying to figure out how are we investing some of these funds for our communities? Is this one a fit for your community? So we're just kind of getting you the framework on it right now. So nothing like that's here, trying to figure out how. It will help to, I think, see a couple of slides here, particularly ones. Is the glare okay on that, guys? You can't see at all.
Alright, alright.
Maybe I go this way?
No, no, it's okay. We talked about it to some extent, so.
Yeah, there's no wind, there's no wind here on tech, right? So.
Now we're.
So the basic idea is, you know, when COVID happened, our region has seen decades of.
Yeah, do you want to try the back?
Yeah, you want to? Okay, how did you do that? Did it go here?
Wow.
This one?
It's ready to connect? Magic stuff, it is. It's magic.
It did happen, it did happen, okay. So.
I'll check out what you guys are doing, see what's going on with this.
Thanks. So there was a moment, Rave, on 28, that we're still trying to recover from. And it showed us, there were several trends that came out of that. One is, we really saw Americans walk to public lands in a big way. Here in the Wilds, we have the greatest concentration of public lands in the Commonwealth. And so that really presents an opportunity for us. Growing outdoor rec was a really good idea 15 years ago, but now it's even, you know, even more viable than it even was. At the same time, what you saw, sort of that middle space is a coworking space over in Bellefonte. And what you saw was overnight, like as a country, we had to figure out how to remote work. And so there's a whole lot of new remote workers out there. And so that really got our wheels turning. Like I said, this is the latest map from the Appalachian Regional Commission, which was part of Appalachia and the PAO Wilds, Warren County is. And no surprise, we're in, all of our counties saw a decrease in population. This has been an ongoing trend. And so, you know, we just finished these round of meetings with all our commissioners. And one of the general themes that kept coming up, sort of updating them on the work, was is this a chance for population recovery for rural places after COVID? You know, are there people out there that have sort of been through an experience and say, oh my gosh, I don't want to live here anymore. I want to move back to someplace that's, you know, smaller town, better quality of life, more recreation assets, those sorts of things. And so it really got our wheels turning. So we've been doing a lot of work with Ben Franklin Technology Partners. They're, they do work statewide, but in the Pennsylvania Wilds, they work on tech that is important to us scaling tourism in the region. And so we had worked with them in that capacity. We had already been working with them, we have an ecosystem of entrepreneurs, about 400 businesses and organizations that participate in our ecosystem. And so we have been working with them, trying to connect them out to our entrepreneurs as well, because they have a very unique suite of technology services and financing around sort of this tech piece that a lot of companies need. So in any case, when all of this happened, we had an opportunity to team up with Ben Franklin inside a grant application to do this pilot program that I'm about to tell you about. So that's kind of the background, how this all came to be. We were, these things were on our mind, we were working with Ben Franklin on a couple of things. It was an opportunity to kind of test it out in a pilot format. And the basic idea was, how do we take this brand that our region has been collectively working on for the 17 years and use that to do more directly, create a pathway for folks that might be interested in coming back to the region through remote work? So we've looked at a lot of models for this. We are not the only rural place that is thinking about this. Some of the different models that we've seen, this is one in West Virginia. And you'll notice that all of the models use outdoor rec as sort of the way they pack it. They wrap it in that experience. No matter what the sort of, you know, tech and remote work spaces they have, this is how they're packaging it, is through the outdoor rec. That picture very well could have been taken here, as you all know, because you live here, right? That's what our bullets look like too. You'll also see that a lot of them have, if you look here, it's really small, I don't have glasses on, so. Karen for Hawaii, this is one out of Hawaii. They, some of them do have sort of a giving back aspect too. And we really like that stewardship, it's long been a part of the Wilds work. So that was another piece that we also looked at for ours. And then finally, when you look at these other models, you see they all have an incentive, right? So this one's $10,000, that first one was $12,000. So there's some sort of financial incentive. This one's the Shoals, Alabama. And what they've been looking at, I put this up, they've been at it, it looks like a little bit longer than other folks have. And what you can see is, you know, it's, these are their metrics that they're reporting back. So it's working, people are, these remote workers are coming back, they're living here. Looks like they're bringing their families and friends, they're bringing their payroll with them, they purchase houses and apartments. So it's a concept, it's working, it's already been tested in other places. And so those are all things that we kind of looked at as we were trying to say, okay, how do we, you know, put something together for our region to try this? So our early thinking on our model is to develop a platform where folks could apply to be remote workers in your town. We wrap it in the brand of the Wilds and the outdoor experience. And we basically position it as try living, working, and exploring, and giving in an up and coming community in the Pennsylvania Wilds. So somebody who can remote work and wants to do it from someplace else, this is how they would do it. And ours is a short stay, two to four weeks is what we're thinking. The other ones, our dollar for dollar is smaller. We're looking at $4,000 is what the stipend would be. And then a couple of meals and lodging and things like that. The other ones you would see, the incentives are much larger. But theirs are a year-long commitment. So we are approaching it from a different angle. And so I think dollar for dollar, we actually have a really good positioning. But in any case, this is how we're sort of approaching ours. So this was a fit for us because as a nonprofit, we already operate consumer platforms. And so, you know, it's a smaller pivot for us. We've got an online store, we're already writing a ton of content and publishing a ton of content about the region and about our communities and assets there through all our regional marketing efforts to bring in foot traffic to our small towns and businesses. So for us, it's a much smaller pivot to then, you know, talk to, also talk to an audience. There's 80 million people who live within a day's drive of us. And so how do you have a conversation with them, create a real pathway for folks that are serious about coming back? And so for us, it's a much smaller pivot than if a community wanted to launch this on their own and figure out all the SEO behind it and all the marketing behind it and that sort of stuff. We're already in that lane, so that's why to us it makes sense. So our early thinking is, we would, for the pilot program, set this up with a locally nonprofit. So they would be the ones who would be really carrying out the program on the ground in that community. The other piece that's really important to our model is to truly come up with a good application process to help the communities and the remote workers find a good fit. You don't want to just have somebody that's just trying to come for a vacation, right? And you're covering all their costs. You want somebody that's seriously thinking about coming and living in your community. And you do that on the front end by asking the right questions and truly having a local team of folks led by that local nonprofit reviewing those applications and making those choices. So the other piece on our model is, of course, the stipend. We would use it using a gift, a Yiffy gift card system. And the stipend would then go to cover lodging, meals, experiences, those sorts of things. It has to be spent at all local businesses. That's a big part of ours as we're putting this together, because we said, okay, how do we make this a win? Even if the remote worker decided not to stay? Even if they came, they experienced it, they had a nice night, but they just, for whatever reason, it wasn't a good fit? Is there still an impact locally that's very positive? And so for us, it's the local spend, both the contract with the local nonprofit and then all the dollars invested here go back into local businesses. That's a good fit for us, because like I said, we've got a network of businesses already. We have a way to communicate with them. 400 businesses and organizations participate in our ecosystem. And it's free for any new ones to join. So if there's some that are like, hey, I want to be part of it, but I'm not in your system, they can easily join. The other parts that we really liked about this is that it would create a toolkit for communities about, you know, how welcoming are they? Can they be more welcoming? We also have a window wrap project in our pilots, and I'll talk about that in a minute, that we've also done, that tries to sort of marry that up with this project. So the incentive, we've had a conversation with these and a number of our communities across the region to give them a heads up about it. And one of the things that came up is, is there a way to this program to support entrepreneurs that have decided, that are already here, that have decided to stay? To support them and help them do more B2B with other businesses in the community? And so we think that there are, a lot of this, you know, everything that I'm presenting today is sort of a framework, not a bit of set in stone. We did just receive funding to do the pilot of two communities. And so a lot of these will get refined. Everything that I'm presenting today will get refined as we start to work through that, really truly getting the need program in place. So, you know, to zoom out and sort of summarize, what the remote workers get is they get to host business or community that's going to help introduce them to the community and the nearby assets. Some of the special activities and things will be planned ahead of time by that locally nonprofit to really, you're trying to, as you bring these folks in, really trying to help them quickly make a connection with your place. And so that takes some, you know, a friend, basically, you know? I think we've all probably traveled, and when you know somebody on the ground in a new place, it just really helps you, you know, enjoy that place more than if you don't know anybody. And so really trying to set that up ahead of time. So they get that, they get this gift card system that covers some of their main expenses, and they get this amazing experience in the PAO Wilds, testing them out, living in, working in one of our communities. What the communities get is marketing for their community, access to a potential new resident or investor in their community, this infusion of local spending via the stipend and the nonprofit contract, a low maintenance gift card system, donating time and talents, because we would be connecting them with a volunteer activity in the community, and a blueprint for the community related to their welcoming plan. How welcoming are we in Warren County, two new people coming in? And so those will be some of the things that you kind of work through through the process of this. So for, like I said, this is a pilot that we're doing inside a grant application that did just get funded. So our pilot towns in that grant were Bellefonte, Kane, and our lead's just giving you an example. In Kane, it's the Kane Area Development Center, and in Bellefonte, it would be Bellefonte Downtown, Inc. So you're not, nonprofit, it does make sense for them to be, you know, the Main Street program or a local chamber or something like that, that has those connections to the community and the businesses already. The one that we're doing is a two-year project, it says three there, we've got a couple of grants in. The one that got funded was a two-year project. And so the first year, we're just going to be developing out and attacking the platform and things. And then the second year, we'll be actually operating the campaigns. To be considered, you know, this isn't a program that's for everybody, every county. So what, you know, what really makes a community eligible in our mind at this early stage? They have to be participating in the PAO Wilds planning team, which Warren County does. The young blocks is a rep there, so you can check that box, any community in Warren County can check that box. Dan, that's a great job. Accessibility to high-speed internet. If the community doesn't have internet, I mean, that would be part of the platform portal. As the remote worker is coming in to apply, we'll have the download and upload speeds for that community listed right on the platform, so they'll be able to see, is this going to fit my needs? So any of our communities that just have blackout areas or none, which there are some in small places throughout, they obviously wouldn't be a fit for this. Most of our core communities, I think, would have speed that would fit what's needed there. But that is what we would see as an eligibility. They have to have a lead coordinating agency, and that org would do all of those things, right? They would help us inventory a bunch of stuff. Does your community have coworking spaces? Does it have, and doing the outreach to the local businesses and things like that? And then the nonprofit community, or nonprofit would also be in charge of creating that sort of welcoming committee and mentorship that happens as the remote worker comes in. And for reviewing the applications as they come in, that committee would. So, and then helping to connect to those volunteer experiences for the remote worker. So that's an overview of what it looks like the pilot does. Right now, we have, we have, the pilot's probably going to start in September, we'll start to build out. Most of our communities, it sounds like, you know, they're still trying to figure out how they want to invest, you know, funds that are coming down. So right now, we are just trying to get the word out to folks to let them know that this is out there, if they're interested, if it makes sense for their community. And we'll have more information. The very short term, what we're asking is, if you would like to be on the list to receive more information, let us know, you know, just give us the best point of contact. And then as we work through that pilot, I think it would probably be in, you know, six months or so that we would say, okay, if there's other communities that want to invest in this, here's what the platform looks like. You could actually go in and see all this, not in theory in a presentation, but in an actual situation. There's other ones who have said, well, can we see how the pilot performs? And then look at investing, and that's certainly an opportunity too. So.
Speaking for myself, I find it very interesting and exciting. I think this is a good opportunity for Warren County. So I am looking forward to seeing how your pilot works and then interested in, you know, where we can jump on.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's definitely worth it, where we've got to try everything that we can recruit people to the region, especially on the end of technical workers and folks that are, you know, going to be, you know, long-term assets to the community just in general. So I definitely think that we should continue to look into this and try to figure out a way to help. And I think, I think one of the things for my mind is, is that we still are getting information on rescue plan.
Sure.
And what the strings are that are attached to that, because from my perspective, I think this fits into that, or we should be able to incorporate it somehow if we wanted to, like to even to tack on to, you know, the pilot or something else. But I, I'm heavily interested in it, so. I think it's a great, I'm glad that you are taking initiative on it, because, you know, like even when you pulled up the thing with what they're doing in West Virginia, I can just picture the conversation that they're having, which is the exact same conversation we're having. Like they're like way ahead, it seems, on what they're doing there, you know? So we were having this conversation before, you know, how are we going to restock, you know, workers? Are we going to, you know, kind of start creating a barrier on the population decline?
Yes.
And then also have people that are going to be engaged with, you know, nonprofit organizations, the community, you know, be community leaders and stuff, this seems really more a possibility, so.
Yeah, it's, the population decline is such a defining issue out here, and you see it. You know, whether it's transitioning nonprofits, transitioning businesses, you know, all of those. And Warren County's a bigger county in the wilds, there's some that are much smaller where it's the same couple of people volunteering for everything. And you just, you know, you just need new folks too. And so there's, you know, just trying to create some pathways, but do it in a very mindful and purposeful way and not sort of everybody come here, come away. And then just try to do it slowly, just slow things. Really trying to help, it'd be a fit, a good fit, you know, at least as we start to try it out.
Do the programs that you showed that have like a year-long program, do they make, like basically you sign a contract to get whatever the incentive is, or do they care certain amount of time?
Yeah, that's my sense, and I had a look at them in great detail. But my understanding with the one is that you get paid at the end of the year. So you sort of front load all your stuff. I do think that with a good application portal, we can get to some serious folks. I mean, I've been in a lot of communities already where you see quite a few boomerang folks. I mean, we've seen it in our network for a long time, that entrepreneurship is a pathway home for a lot of folks. They want to come back and live in rural PA, they're just not sure what they're going to do, and that's a pathway home. So we've been seeing that in our network for a while, but since COVID and in the last couple of years, I would say that's sped up in places that there's folks that are looking to come back. And you know, I mean, this may be a program that helps them to say, you know, could I really make a go of this? And they could use this stipend to truly come back. And you would figure that out in the application process. You could see if there are real chances that they might come back and live here and bring their family with them. So anyway, something you can do is try, right?
How did you choose Kane and Bellefonte?
That's a great question. It was mainly because we were going into that grant application with Ben Franklin. And there were already a cluster of sort of investments that were happening there. So those are the two that were kind of the lowest paying, proved made sense with some other investments that were happening there. And so, but we actually do have another application in that we're trying to get funded to add a couple of key to that, because this is before any of the recovery funds were coming, you know, all of this sort of started. And so we do have that second application, and we haven't heard about that one yet. But we do have at least the base one to build up the platform and the tech that we're going to need in order to see the pilot.
And so as those pilots, both Bellefonte and Kane, what type of dollar application do you think you have?
Yeah, that's great. So. So for the pilot, we actually got those dollar allocations covered through the grant. And we did twenty-five thousand to cover the whole two years. So I think with.
For each one?
For each one, yes. And so it, it's a smaller one than we would recommend. I think what a community would look to invest is probably, you know, twenty thousand a year for each year it's running. And then the contract for their local nonprofit to lead it is probably four to five thousand dollars a year. All of those monies, the great thing about the investment is all of those monies go directly back into your community. So you invest in the program, it goes into local businesses in your town, it goes into a local nonprofit in your town to kind of carry out the program. So we, we really tried to make it, the setup for it in a way that even if the remote worker doesn't work out, the funds that are invested still have a really positive impact on the ground. So that was really important to us as we were trying to figure out how to hold it off, how can we test it in a, in a practical way that makes sense for us here in the world P A? So, and we'll see, you know, is the, is the short stay better than the long stay? I do think that the short stay is, a lot of people can't commit to a whole year in a new place, you know, to test it out. But they could commit to come in for a couple of weeks to really figure it out and help them make that final decision. So I don't know, maybe it'll be the perfect one. Maybe we'll get a feedback group that says we should go for the long stay. You know, that's part of the pilot is figuring out how it all pans, so.
And if you think about twenty-five hundred dollars in a, what, two-week period? That's a pretty big change for people to have to spend.
Yeah, well, and it depends on the length of the stay. Sure. For the lodging and the meals and the, and experiences we're trying to cover as well. So a couple of those, just to give them a real sense, you know, for take a backpacking trip, take a paddling trip. You know, something like that that makes you feel connected to this place, you know, and makes it, you know, so that you get those heartstrings.
And I think that, you know, in rural America, that it's very important when you are exploring a new community to meet others who live in it and enjoy it. I think that is a very key recruiting element that is, is very important, particularly to the rural experience.
Yes, and, and you're absolutely right. And that is all going around the, the welcoming committee concept is let the community build its own welcoming. And so if you already have kind of a de facto welcoming community that they formed over their years, and so this would just sort of, but it would allow us as the center to sort of pull quotes from people, recent entrepreneurs that have come in, and then sort of package those around the community so that these new folks coming in hear from other people who have chosen this place, you know. You know, I live here in Warren County, and I chose to move back here. And why did I do that? And so did my sister, and why did she do that? You know, all of those are really powerful stories, you know, for, for people to hear and to understand. And so, you know, to capture them and package them, I mean, that's part of what the community gets out of this is that, you know, that sort of marketing for your community that really tees it up for beyond this program. I think that's not what you asked, and so.
That's great.
I've heard as interested as I am in the worker bit, entrepreneurship bit, I think is even more important or interesting. I mean, all of the major businesses that we have that offer a high level of employment in the rural world, and all those businesses are aging and changing, you know. We've had, you know, a good bit of them have been around for ninety years, you know, and we need to replenish that stock, especially with newer and different.
It's huge, it's huge in the future.
Yeah, I mean, and we benefited from having a diverse portfolio of businesses, but it's kind of like to maintain that diversity, everything, you know, we're going to have a few businesses, different businesses, and also give the opportunity for the ones that we have to change into a wall, so.
Anything else for the group here? I appreciate you giving them time to help.
Yeah, thanks.
In-person?
Yes, likewise.
This is the virtual.
I know the Zoom stuff. Have you, is this your first in-person meeting? How long have you guys been doing this for a while?
Well, no, I mean, for a few weeks, I think. And it hasn't been that long, we've just been doing all in-person meetings. And still, there's still a lot to get used to, to that. I, I told, so like we were at the CTEC, like the Northwest County Commissioners Meeting, and I was telling Bob Snyder, the Forest County Commissioner, that we're, we're, we're not back to normal because we never were normal, but we're back to typical. And I, I like typical, so.
Well, yeah, I appreciate you guys having me in. Thanks. I'll add you guys to the, to the list for more information as we pull the pilot.
That would be great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that was, that was neat. So next thing on our agenda, policy and procedures. I don't think we have, intend to have any before us. Not yet, no. The Commissioners' meeting, so. God, anything for you, Jeff?
Well, I was just going to say, the, the list is kind of, I don't know. You can just say that, is there anything else?
I'd be happy to say that. I don't have any specific projects. I mean, we're still kind of up in arms about the rescue funds and what do we do with it.
Yeah.
Working towards planning on some of that, so.
Yeah, everything that I have is still, I think, so.
Okay. And as far as the meeting goes, we talked about the library improvement project.
Very exciting.
Very exciting.
Kelly's, Kelly's pretty excited. She's ready to go, aren't you ready? You've been waiting on this for a while.
I've been waiting on this for a long time.
We didn't get that many things.
Well, you know.
The, on the agenda is the general construction and the plumbing. Now, those were opened beforehand, right? And today was just the electrical, mechanical, and furniture.
Okay.
We re-did.
So we're going, that, that's about you reading what we opened last time?
Yes.
That's right, okay.
We, we, a lot of stuff was re-did because we either didn't get anything at all or we didn't get something that we wanted, basically.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's, it's construction season, it's a little bit of a challenge.
Oh, yeah. I think that's the biggest thing in the Commissioners' meeting, I would say.
Yeah.
With some other smaller agreements and things. Um, I'm here and there, but the rest of the week is releasing the schedule, so. Any general discussion? I don't think we need a regular session.
Elections would like to speak. Please, elections.
Only if you, only if you talk about yourself in the third person. Elections thinks that.
Lisa would like to.
Yeah.
So we have like forty-two thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-three cents in old-havel money.
Okay.
Our election bags are aging. I mean, they've been here longer than I have been. And we're packing in fuller and fuller and fuller, and they're wearing out. So I did some research on collapsible rolling supply bag. And I found them at Intab for a hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents each. I recommended that purchase thirty-five of them, and that's five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And of course, that does not include tax or shipping. This is what they look like. They are collapsible.
Do you have time to put paint on them?
No.
What did you say?
Well, the bags that they got, they got.
Some of our election bags are.
They're decorated.
Oh, okay.
A long time ago, we had a, a judge of elections that she'd take one every year, and she painted like flowers in front of them.
Oh, okay.
They were beautiful, but they are wearing out. I mean, we had awful time.
She's still volunteering to do, do painter?
We had heck of a time closing them last time. You know, because we have to send her in the paper now, and, you know. So, but we're also hoping that once we get these in, that possibly we can put the precinct's attached one-hole pad, put it right in here, and that's going to make it more compact for the guys in the delivery machines. But as you can see, they're in wheels and they're on hand, they have a handle, and so I'm asking if we can purchase those. I know it has to be, probably has to be decided on at the Commissioners' meeting?
No, I think, I mean, I think that, you know, the election board, as long as it's comfortable with it, then we've discussed the purchasing protocol.
Okay, then do I have the okay to purchase these?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, those bags, I mean, I, I, I'd be curious as to what they're actually used because of.
Well, because they've been here longer than I have. And I've been here fourteen years, so.
Are they on wheels?
No.
I didn't see so.
They're just leather.
They're just leather bags. And everything we have to send to the precincts is just.
Well, I think it's a good thing for, for the wheels bit because, gee, this last election, especially with all this stuff now, I have every, I don't want to say everyone, but several of the folks that I talked to, I mean, they were just really lamenting a lot of stuff that they had to haul back and forth. And most of them are seniors that don't, you know, I mean, they shouldn't be moving that stuff in some cases, I think, you know.
Where this is on wheels and, you know. And like I said, we're hoping, you know, especially precincts have just one hole pad, put it right in there. And then that's less for the maintenance guys to have to keep track of and make sure that we have the right hole pad and the right precinct and those kinds of things, so. So we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go, I'll go ahead and contact Intab. I, I looked at a couple other companies, and they were just a little bit higher.
So you did check around, and this is the least expensive?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, like I said, you, you want to go talk to finance.
Right.
To go and walk through the purchasing protocol.
Or have to do a mental, like you've always had, but.
Yeah.
You know, that's, it's, it won't, not to have a funny conversation about that, I have my money, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing is, as you guys saw some emails floating around about Freehold Township.
Yeah.
The last email that I sent you on Friday said that I was just going to get the minute meeting, the meeting minutes from when this poll worker attended the Commissioners' meeting. I don't know. I mean, the poll workers said if they, you know, move the precinct, they're going to, but they won't do that anymore. To me, it's just a lot of petty, petty stuff going back and forth between all these people. I have not contacted that fire hall yet because I needed you guys' input as to if we really wanted to move the polling place. Ben, you know, stated this like on the outskirts of the township where the township building is more centrally located. Alan Smith was in that Friday, and he said he doesn't care whether the other, whether we move or we leave it there.
He's a township person?
He's the chairman of township supervisor. I almost got the impression he wishes we'd take it someplace else just because of the hassle.
Ever since the, ever since Head Start left that space, it's been, to my understanding, like vacant most of the time. And I don't think that they were, you know, they weren't spending that much time there anyway.
Head Start?
Yeah, well, no, no, yeah, when Head Start left, there was like a presence in the building on a regular basis.
In Freehold?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know Head Start was ever down there.
Yeah, when, when, when we'd set up the polling location.
Years and years ago? How long ago was it?
No, it was, it was, they just moved it two years ago or a year ago.
Oh, see, I never, I didn't know that there was a Head Start even in the Freehold Township building.
Yeah, and that's where they'd set up the equipment. And there, it was a classroom and everything. And I got the impression that due to that, there was like activity in the building a lot. And so there was more of a focus there. Once they left, I mean, I don't know what they're doing with that space at all. And, and you talked about how, like their, their staff and everything's part-time, so you'd have to call them and schedule something in order. And they're, so I'm assuming that this is kind of a burden to them just trying to maintain it.
So I have not contacted that fire hall because I didn't know which ones wanted to go with this, with moving this polling place.
Well.
And I know, I mean, if Dan knew, he's been in other conversations too. And, you know, I've kind of given him the polling for people's side of the story. And those emails that he's sent back and forth. But now this is the township side. And, you know, they, the township has actually stated to me, Alan stated to me in Crystal the other day, that hundred dollars doesn't cover all their expenses for the election because they have to pay their people overtime to come in to open the polling place in the morning or, you know, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think if, if there's a foot of front for the polling workers to, you know, not be involved any longer, and we feel concerned that we won't be able to replace them, would this be something that we could actually, I think? I mean, they're the ones doing the work, right? It sounds like they found an alternative location, meaning the fire hall. I understand it's not as centrally located as the township thing, but.
And both of these are elected.
And it's not that far.
No, it's only five minutes.
If you have to.
Because I pulled it up on our map to see what the distance was to the township building and that fire hall. And I think the drive to town is five minutes.
You're going to have to drive to it out of the water. And it's going to be a straight, you know, like a stretch, like you can't.
Exactly.
There's no place in that area where you can just like, but I guess there's houses like on that main intersection that you could walk from, but that's about it. Everybody else is driving to go.
Oh, I see, it's your, I see.
Yeah, like, like if you moved it to the other side of the township closer to like Rude Day or whatever, you're still going to have to drive to the location. I, my, my, one of my issues with this is I do not, I don't think that it's fair for election workers to say, we're just, if this doesn't happen, we're leaving. Because they're, they're elected to take on responsibility.
They're all up for election this, this time?
Yeah, I kind of have an issue with that because, I mean, we can't do this or, you know, have everybody go along, go on a string or whatever for, for, because I don't like.
I think what matters is because these two ladies are the only two on the ballot. I think if we don't move it, they may just deny, or not accept their.
Well, I mean, and, but on the other hand, they're the ones that have to live with the.
I know, I agree with you.
You know what I mean? So they're the ones, I understand that, you know, they want, yes. But the question is, can the fire hall provide everything that they need? I mean, I'm guessing toilet paper is not a problem.
My sister.
Yeah.